This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting. We're Tuesday, February 7th. As always, we have a ton on the agenda, so we'll jump into it. I'll start with putting forward a motion to remove item nine, which is a calendar discussion, the 2023-2024 school calendar. We're going to remove that from tonight's agenda for approval because we need to get a couple more pieces of data. And Dr. McGowan will talk to that in just a minute, but a motion to remove that agenda item from tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Susan, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
The item is removed.
Okay.
Got it? We'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan and have him discuss the calendar briefly before he does the Brighton Believers.
Yeah, so just very briefly, we decided to ask you to remove that from the agenda tonight, but we will bring it back on February 28th. It's an interesting calendar next year. There are actually plenty of days, which means very little to most people, other than people that have to spend time thinking way too much about it. But we're really thinking about how to make sure, again, it's the most inclusive calendar it can possibly be, but also managing a whole bunch of different variables, including an eclipse on April 8th, which is a question that we'd like to work through, and the holidays that we'd like to make sure we observe. So we're working through that. But I do want people to know the first day of school, and we'll put this out in the E-News on Friday, is right now going to be on Wednesday, September 6th. So not the Tuesday right after Labor Day, but the Wednesday after Labor Day. And the February break is intact like it normally would be. So for those traveling the next couple of weeks that would like to know, they'll still be able to have that week next year. That is true. And the April break will occur in the first week of April. The question really is around that break, what the days off will be. But the first week of April is when the April break will be. So we'll get that out to people as soon as we possibly can and have a couple of these highlights in the newsletter this Friday. So any questions on that from any board members? Anything else that I didn't point out that I should be pointing out that you can remember? Great. Thank you. So we're going to jump into the Brighton Believers Award. Just would like to remind people that the Brighton Believes Council continues to receive nominations from people in the community, the school community, greater Brighton community, for the Brighton Believers Award. And we would encourage people to find that nomination form on the website. And we have members of our school community that we still would like to continue to recognize for demonstrating our Brighton Believe character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. And anybody can nominate somebody for doing that, but it's quite an honor, and we're very happy to continue that tradition tonight. Without further ado, our recognition tonight is of Catherine Lebo. Catherine, can you come on up? Danielle Edmonds, can you come? And Mr. Larry Davis, if you could come on up as well as the nominator. Right there. Wherever you can put me, a shot of you on camera. Larry always enjoys that. Catherine is being recognized. She's a counselor at the middle school nominated by our board president, Larry Davis. Larry wrote, Catherine is a leader for the YMCA Camp Gorm Laura and Larry Davis Jr. Scholarship Fund, named after Larry's parents. Each year, the fund awards five to six campers scholarships to TCMS students as selected and pre-qualified through Catherine and the TCMS counselor team. This past summer, six kids were selected, and they and their parents' feedback after their stay at camp was filled with gratitude, appreciation for new friends, and a sincere love of being outdoors. Catherine coordinates with Brighten Your Wardrobe, the Brighten Your Wardrobe team, to make sure they are outfitted for camp with the right outerwear, footgear, and any other necessary supplies, which can be quite an undertaking if you don't have those things at quickly at your disposal. On different occasions, she has driven students to camp or picked them up from camp and brought them home. This campership fund was created in Brighton in memory of Laura and Larry Davis Jr., who believes strongly in the power of overnight camp, of being outside, away from phones, and with other kids of the same age in a beautiful mountain setting. Donations are received at the Rochester YMCA in memory of Laura and Larry Davis to help fund these scholarships. Larry and his family are grateful that Catherine has taken on this role, and it's been so impactful for these kids, largely due to Catherine's energy and enthusiasm. Larry's family is remarkable for helping to fund this, create this opportunity. But to have somebody take it on and make sure kids are comfortable going on the experience, prepared to go on the experience, all the barriers that could get in the way of it being a truly meaningful experience for those children, requires somebody to really spearhead that and put a tremendous amount of time. That's over and above. This is way beyond Catherine's job. So for that and everything that Catherine does, we'd like to award her with the Brighton Believers Award this evening. Congratulations.
Larry's son is here. You guys see? It's his son?
It's his son.
Once again, thank you, Catherine. I am honored that we have a special guest here with us tonight, Amy Thomas, who's the Executive Director of the Monroe County School Board Association. I'm going to ask her to go ahead to the podium so she can make a few comments. I'll do just a couple of quick, brief intros and make sure I don't take any of her material. Brighton first got involved with the Monroe County School Board Association in 1971. So we've been involved with this organization for over 50 years. I think just about all of you have been to a school board association training, sometimes taught by folks in our school district, including Lou. And then we're on committees, legislative, labor relations, information exchange. So the services they provide are astounding and very helpful. And this is great. This is Amy's first year as executive, and she has a goal to get to every district's, a school board meeting for every district. She's, this is number 13, I think? Is it right now? West Side, East Side, something like that?
Yeah, it's 12.
Okay. So a great goal, and we are so happy that you're here. So we'll give you the floor.
Well, thank you for having me. This is a pleasure for me to actually come out to see boards at work at their tables. So I'm honored to be here. I really want to just come out and thank you for being a part of Monroe County School Boards Association. And many of you are so actively involved, so I feel like I'm going to be very repetitive tonight. But I think it's really important as a new executive director to come out and acknowledge, I served on a board for nine years, but it was one board. And every board functions differently. So I want to recognize that and actually celebrate that. That's one of the exciting things that I get to do. So seeing and visiting boards is a really important part of my entry into Monroe County School Boards Executive Director position. I also want to acknowledge my small but mighty team, and I always try to recognize them. Nancy Pickering, who's our program director, is just outstanding. She's relatively new. Mary Talbit has been with us for 28 years, and she is our office manager. So it's really the three of us. We do have a new legislative liaison that I'm proud to announce, who works for us on a per diem basis. And she has added tremendous value, Sarah Pelucio, to our legislative team and our legislative efforts. So we are here to support each of you as you lead the work in your district, and we're here to support every single student in your community. So you all know pretty much who I am because you work with me, and I've had the pleasure of getting to know each one of you as a board member when I was a board member, but now as executive director, in your involvement through the association this year. I'm here tonight to remind you of a few things, why you're members of MCSBA, and you are one of the longest standing members of the association. And I have to just call Larry out for this because he contacted me and he said, how many years have we been part of this association? I said, well, looking into the history, we didn't have computers back then. But according to our records, you were one of the first districts to join Monroe County School Boards. But why are we still relevant? Why are we important to you as board members? And that's really, you know, I think through the pandemic, we realized a lot of things. We realized the importance of continuous learning. We realized how it taught us to be better leaders through crisis, and certainly how to prepare ourselves for the unexpected. But we couldn't do that alone if we didn't have a collective group of people and an association like Monroe County School Boards to help us along in that path. So we're here to educate, inform, and provide the necessary support to each of you as you lead in your communities. So what exactly do we do? For those of you in the audience or those of you at home who don't know what we do, our mission statement has been revised this year to reflect really who we are as a collective group. The Monroe County School Boards Association is a member-driven organization providing support to public school leaders as they strive to provide an equitable education for all students. We actually provide 45-plus professional development programs for our membership per year, three standing committee meetings every month, information exchange, labor relations, and legislative. We have four board president meetings, two law conferences, two social hours, which is a new addition this year because the membership was asking for more opportunities to network, three district clerk seminars. That's the first time in our history this year to offer three district clerk seminars. We facilitate board retreats when asked, and we also facilitate meet-the-candidate nights. We have a prospective candidate seminar, and that's coming up in March on the 25th. We also have SED required training. So you all know, you've all attended the required trainings, but it's 12 hours of required training, six in board governance and six in fiduciary responsibilities. We produce two publications, Best for Less and Facts for Figures, and those are hot off the press. So you will all be receiving those this week. We have all of them ready to be shipped to all of the districts. And we also facilitate tax bill printing and processing for the entire county. I'd just like to highlight a few things that our legislative work, our committee, has done this year. It's an outstanding committee, and a few of you are on it. But the work that our legislative group has done this year has been tremendous. We've actually revised 10 of our position papers, which helped us, as you know, in our legislative advocacy work in December and also this past weekend. I hope you're all thawed out from the weekend. We had a fantastic Saturday, spending the entire morning with local legislators to present what our positions are, our collective positions through the association, and many of you were in attendance. So I thank you for being there, and I apologize how cold it was. But in that committee, we also have a community outreach advisory committee that also creates advocacy talking points for us. We attend local appointments, and I know that your district attends appointments also, which is very important to attend legislative appointments as a district. We have a one-day advocacy, whether it's live or virtually, in December. We have our legislative breakfast. We have the March two-day, which may become a one-day trip this year to Albany, and hopefully you've all received the survey that we sent out today. We also invite board of regents to one of our information exchange or legislative meetings each year just to share their perspective. And of course, I share the executive director legislative updates with all the board membership on our website. What's changed since I stepped in as executive director? I did conduct a survey as soon as I took this position because I wanted to see what the membership wanted. And essentially, there were a few key findings. One was networking, as I mentioned before. We actually, Nancy and I completely overhauled our website last summer. We don't consider ourselves website developers by any stretch, but we did do that. And the feedback has been very positive. I think those who use our website understand the amount of information that is out there to support our board members is really incredible. So I do encourage you to log into our website. We also have a board president blog. We also have an executive director blog. Within those blogs, you're able to ask questions, and they're all in a secured channel for you to have that access in 24/7 with us in the office. Another key point was to improve our remote access. So we do have a hybrid model for our information exchange and labor relations committee meetings. And I'm happy to say that when the technology works, it's fantastic. But the audio has really been a drastic improvement from last year, and our registration links to attend our committee meetings have also been a drastic improvement. So that is pretty much where we stand today. There are many other things that we do within Monroe County School Boards, but I wanted to just take this opportunity to highlight a few of them. And also, again, say thank you to all of you for participating in the association. It's very important that we have you there. So anything that I can do to offer to you, please feel free to critique, provide suggestions. I'm here for you. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
No, I would just say there were a few of us at the legislative session on Saturday, and it was cold outside. It was also cold inside because the heat failed. But you know what? The session went on. Everybody wore jackets, and it came off, and we got to talk to people. So I appreciate that that wasn't under the best conditions, but we soldiered on, and we made good contacts. So thank you for setting that up. Those types of things are very important for us, to be able to get some of the things we need for our students.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the board? I know this is going to be the favorite stop on your tour, but I wish you continued success on the rest of your tour throughout Monroe County. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot.
Do we have anybody who would like to speak for public participation? Principal Tappin? No, you're on set?
Okay.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda with the amendment we made at the beginning of the meeting of the elimination. Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Also want approval of the minutes from the January 17th, 2023 business meeting. You've all had a chance to review those minutes. Any edits, changes, comments?
Kim, did you get my note?
I did. It's all set.
All right.
We're good. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor? We're excited to hear about, to get the health, physical education, and athletics update from Nate Merritt.
First off, thank you for having me tonight. It's always really nice to share some of the highlights for our physical education, health, and athletic program. Really, we're doing a lot of new and innovative things in all three areas, and it's just a nice opportunity for me to get in front of the board and the public and share some of those things. I'll start off with our health education program. Some highlights this year, you'll hear throughout this presentation tonight, we started a new partnership with the U of R this year. It originally started with a strength and conditioning program, but it has now morphed into something much bigger and better for our district. We had the opportunity with a Brighton graduate that was kind of taking an initiative at U of R with nutrition, strength and conditioning, and also sports psychology. And with an opening in strength and conditioning, we kind of jumped on this program for an all-in-one. And as you see, so at all three levels right now, so our elementary school, our middle school, and our high school are utilizing this partnership. At the high school this year, they came and talked about nutrition. They're working with our little ones at the FRES to talk about, again, nutrition, but also healthy eating habits, things like that. And then our middle school are in discussions what they're going to be doing right now as well. So it's a really nice partnership that we formed, and we look forward to what that's going to become in the future. I got to talk to the board a little bit earlier in discussions. Our 3-5 is really working closely with Bavona and creating a really, really nice program that is kind of a teach-the-teacher model, where now our health educators are teaching the Bavona lessons instead of Bavona, which is really nice because our kids are know and comfortable with our teachers, are able to ask really important questions. So, and we've really worked out language that's appropriate for our kids, which is integral moving forward. So that has been a great partnership as well. The high school this year added an adapted health class. A couple years ago, Mrs. Dwyer, Mrs. Erin Dwyer, one of our high school health teachers, and I sat through a session at our New York State conference, and we saw a great presentation about an adapted health class. And really, what this means is it's more about life skills. It's more about, you know, kids moving forward and, again, making healthy eating choices, but also career choices, how to have resources in the public. So this health class really morphed into our 1201 class at the high school, getting out and about in the city of Rochester, learning about careers, learning about nutrition, learning about health and fitness. There were field trips to the firehouse, YMCA, the JCC. Many, many opportunities for them to get out in the public and experience things instead of sitting in what we would consider a traditional health class and talk about mental health, nutrition. They really got to experience things first. This is something that we're going to keep moving forward. It looks like we're going to be running it every other year as an opportunity at the high school because of the success we saw. So we're really excited about that. And lastly, we added additional health classes at 3 through 5. Everything that we've learned, you know, kind of since the pandemic and mental health as it is right now, we really push for having health education 3 through 5. We have a wonderful educator, Janice Mix, at the FRES building, and she's doing a fantastic job working with our kids, providing wellness activities, and really working with our counseling staff to provide really, really good education. So this is just another highlight for us moving forward. Physical education, it was interesting. Danielle Edmonds and myself, along with Dr. Rio, got to talk a lot about co-ed classes moving forward. This has been a discussion that Debbie Baker and I had probably seven years ago when I came into this position, about secondary education and it becoming co-ed. It's been in the works, and really, we're moving forward in the right direction. We morphed that program into the sixth grade this year, and really, it's been fantastic. I got to observe a class this past week, working on cooperative activities. So not your generic, maybe floor hockey class or basketball class, but really something where kids were moving around, kids were having to cooperate together, and really something that they can move forward to as far as relationships, problem solving, strategy. So it was really great to see. And you'll see later, I think, with this success, we're really going to be moving forward in the right direction for all of our other secondary education. Again, we partnered with the U of R. Picture on the left is our Brighton graduate Connor Lorenzo, who is heading up the program at U of R. He actually went into council rock and was teaching strength and conditioning with PVC poles, so teaching kids how to lift the correct way right off the bat. And it was awesome to see kids do something that they've never experienced before, and they just had a blast doing something different. So the goal of this is that if we can introduce how to do things the right way earlier on, by the time the kids get to that secondary education, this is something that vocabulary-wise, they're going to know, the movements they're going to know. And we're going to see physical education students and athletes alike healthier, right? So they're going to be, you know, we're going to understand how to do things in the off-season and throughout phys ed class so that, you know, we get stronger in the right way, not just stronger to be strong. So it was great. And we had some great additions in multiple places in our phys ed program that have a huge, huge impact. So again, I've said it since I started here, it's the people that make the difference. I have a fantastic staff right now of really innovative, great professionals that are doing a great job working together and aligning our curriculum and kind of pushing the envelope for changing things. So it's not that traditional physical education program that we once might have known. Moving on to athletics, I would say this, it was really, really enjoyable to come back in August and what I would say is back to as much normal as possible. It was the start of the year where we weren't wearing masks going into soccer season, and I can tell you, our kids were thrilled. You'll see the next slide of our crowd at Homecoming. We really felt like we got back to something normal for kids socially, emotionally, and sports is just a great outlet for them to do so. Participation in the seven years continues to climb. Since the pandemic, we've seen more and more kids taking the risk to come out for sports. Unfortunately, not everybody is playing a sport. It's not for everyone, but our numbers continue to be on the rise. We continue to, I continue to have to talk to Dr. McGowan about adding teams because we have so many kids coming out for the sports. And really, that's not a bad thing. That's a really good thing that our kids want to be involved, want to be part of something at our school. Also, I think a lot says, a lot is said for our coaching staff that is encouraging these kids. A lot of our teacher coaches want these kids to come out. They're talking to them in the hallways, and because of these relationships, kids are coming out for sports, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing. We had the opportunity, again, with U of R, our weight room, if you ever get a chance at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, just take a walk down. There's about 150 kids working out every day. It's for our whole student body. It's not just for athletes. It's an open workout session that's instructed by a certified strength and conditioning coach. We did this purposefully so that it wasn't just a sports team that was in there at 2:45 or 3 o'clock. There's an open block for everyone in our school to go and get instruction. So they never have to play a sport to be down there. They can be an athlete. It doesn't really matter. It's a wonderful, wonderful group of individuals after school. And what we've seen is, once they buy in, we're seeing them on a regular basis. So even if they're not playing a sport, they're in there three days a week. They might be in there five days a week, which is fantastic. And lastly, I really wanted to share this. We partnered with the Special Olympics this year, and we had a unified bowling team. And it was just, it was one of those experiences that was just remarkable, seeing our kids, you know, they partner up. They get to choose a partner at our high school, and so they bowl in partners. And it was just an amazing experience. Again, Erin Dwyer, after the adapted health, really pushed this. It was the same group of kids and said, we need to do something more. And she was spot on, and we were able to hook up with the Special Olympics and create this experience. It was a full bowling season for these kids, kind of in the off-season of bowling. It was in between fall and winter, and it was just a fantastic experience. If anybody knows Sean on the right here, Sean was interviewed by 585 primetime and had a wonderful, wonderful interview first day out about how he's the best bowler in Rochester. So it's fantastic. Again, just some accolades. I like to point this out because I think so many times, this goes by the wayside. That's our crowd on Homecoming. I think so many times that we look at things and say the participation is just the athletes on the field. We continue, Friday night was a great example. Mr. Davis was there. Friday night at basketball was a huge, huge crowd for our new Bruin unveiling. This is Homecoming. It's not just the athletes on the field. I think our athletic program goes far beyond our athletes. It's our community. It's the kids coming out. It's our hoop group, and it's our kids collectively coming together for a larger cause. So that's why I wanted to point that out to you. Highlights, second year in a row, we're a school of excellence in New York State. What this means is every one of our varsity teams had a 90-plus GPA collectively. That's pretty amazing. Right now, I think this year, we are one of 17 schools in New York State that received this honor. So it's the second year in a row. We won five sectional championships. We have three individual sectional champs. We had eight sectional finalists in teams. We had 50, over 50 kids competing at the state level. So I put that first one, you know, our school of excellence. So every one of our teams has a 90-plus GPA, and yet, we do all of this in winning championships too. And I think they go hand in hand. Our kids do it the right way. I've always said that. Our kids are good students first. They take care of business in the classroom. They really are well-rounded, and they are able to do all of these really special things on top of being good students. And I'm very, very proud of them and our coaching staff as well. Lastly, just future items to come. We've been working really hard, as I talked about, a co-ed experience from the K-12 level. And this is something that we're going to try, we're going to be rolling out next year into our secondary education. Right now, if you, you know, and I'll explain this a little bit. Right now, our 11-12 program really is a co-ed experience anyways because it's a choice program. Kids get to choose where they want to go. Our 9-10 program will go to something very similar to that. So kids will have more choice in what their physical education experience looks like. There will be traditional options. There will be new and innovative options. There'll be lifetime fitness options. So kids will have much more choice in what their physical education program looks like 9 through 12. And because of the success in sixth grade, we're moving that on to seventh and eighth. So I'm really, really proud of, obviously, working through some things and honestly working with our staff. Luckily, we have a great assistant superintendent that's giving us all access to improving our program and allowing our teachers to work on their craft during the summer months and work on really making this the best program it can be. And this summer's going to be an exciting one for us as we roll out something really new and exciting for our kids. Health, it's going to be an ongoing, you know, work in progress with mental health and continuing to partner. I think that's one thing that we've really noticed over the last couple of years is our partnerships are huge. We don't have all the answers as health education with mental health and wellness and nutrition. We don't have all those answers. And working with internal and external partners has been a huge asset to us, and we'll continue doing so. And lastly, I think our athletic program does this better than anyone. But the experience is everything. We don't hold our head high when we're winning state championships and winning sectional championships. That's not what we're all about. I would take a Friday night where all of our kids are in the crowd and our Bruin comes out over any sectional title that we win. title that we win. And I think our kids do that really well. Our coaches are focused on experiences and relationships with our kids, and we'll continue to do so.
Question. It's just a great update, Nate. I appreciate everything that's going on. And I think the mental health aspect is particularly important just across the board everywhere, not just in athletics, but sort of across the board. So I appreciate that focus. I also love, I mean, it was a packed house on Friday night. I did not see you in the conga line, going out behind the mascot, but I thought that was great. Just a really great evening. So congrats on that. Also to Dr. Hall, it was really well done. Questions from the board?
Great job, Nate.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll get some blueprint updates from Lou's Out, Allison, Deanna.
And Tom.
And Tom?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and Tom.
So we are super fortunate to hear our blueprint updates from myself and Deanna and Tom, who is here in place of Lou, and also Caitlin O'Neil and Jeff Green, who will be giving an update on some of their work that they've been doing as well. So lots of people we'll be hearing from tonight in terms of blueprint updates, but very similar to our update in the fall, just going to go through all of the five areas of the blueprint and really just touch upon the things that we have worked on since November. So there are lots of items in the blueprint that, you know, are ongoing and that will be continued to be worked on throughout the remainder of the school year, but really want to highlight the work that's been going on since we last chatted together. So as you'll see, we'll go through each one of our goals, similar to the goals that we went through in the fall, but also just really honing in on those five key areas. So the area I'll speak about tonight is academic excellence and some of the work that's happening across the district in that regard. So a lot of our work in the blueprint has been identified through transfer goals and profile of a graduate. And really what this looks like, as I mentioned earlier in the fall, is we are looking at coming up with some transfer goals for our students that will be goals that they will work towards from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade in all of the different disciplines that they encounter in that time. So we started this work in the fall, as I mentioned, by gathering some information from our teachers at the conference day and what's important to them. And really, our instructional leadership team, along with additional teacher volunteers, has supported this work meeting monthly since early this fall, and we will continue that through April. And where we are right now is we have some really strong drafts of goals that would be, that we presented to teams starting just yesterday with our Council Rock teams, but through the entire month of February across the whole district to get feedback from teachers. So really, the question we're asking is, are these the goals that you can see students doing in your classroom in terms of each discipline? What does that look like? Would you be able to provide evidence for what that looks like? Because in the ideal situation, all of our teachers from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade are working towards that same end in mind, and it looks different at every single grade level. Like, a great example is a sports analogy. When you think about a child who's learning how to play soccer when they're in kindergarten, it looks very different than the skills they've learned by the time they get to high school. So you teach them the basic skills when they're starting out, but really, you're working towards that same goal. And that's the same idea that we want to have in our curriculum, so that our students are working towards those same goals and we can measure it over time. So that's the work that's been happening. The next steps in terms of our transfer goals are to finalize them, number one, and then begin to establish success criteria. So what does it look like if we met the goal at each grade level, which really provides a clear picture for our teachers of what they're working towards with students as they progress from kindergarten all the way to twelfth grade? So that's really exciting for me especially. And also, part of that is, that really dovetails nicely into this, is the work that Curriculum Council has been doing around profile of a graduate. So that work is identifying, you know, the characteristics of what we as a community, as students, teachers, staff, would expect to see of our students when they leave us here in Brighton. So when they leave us as twelfth graders, what are the characteristics we want to see? And the ones that I've shared up here are the seven that Curriculum Council, along with the support of everyone and feedback across K-12, have shared: empathetic, advocate, resilient, curious, joyful, critical thinker, and collaborator. And our next step is to continue to define what that looks like and create some visual representations for the teams to review and kind of give feedback on. In the end, what we'd like to present is this profile of a graduate that has all the transfer goals kind of aligned to it. So it all kind of comes together, so we're working towards the same goals for our students. So that's a big piece of the work we're doing under academic excellence this year, and you'll hear about that through lots of different avenues as we continue the school year. Ongoing this year, we've been reviewing culture and climate data from our students, staff, and families at each building. So I talked about that in the fall as we reviewed our data from Panorama over the summer, but that's continued as we've progressed into the school year in different ways, whether it's focus groups, additional parent surveys, additional student surveys. But each building has kind of looked at that in a different way, and you'll hear a little bit more about that. But we're also talking about what's next as a district. So the right time to survey our whole entire faculty and staff again to kind of look at our progress over the year, where we need to continue to grow, as well as our students. So there'll be more to come about that, and you'll hear about it later in this presentation as well. Another big project as part of our blueprint that has really been led by Dr. Tracy Glazer and Laura Dekman, who's our new application specialist in the district. They have done amazing work with this this year. So they've been collecting information on every single application that we use, instructional application in the district. And this is a really big product, project. And right now, we are just wrapping up the collection of the educational applications, and we have over six hundred applications that we, teachers use in the classroom across K-12. And just to give you an example, is that a lot or not a lot? It's actually very similar to what other districts have. However, the recommendation for our work to be able to provide the right support and to be able to provide the right secure, you know, measures to operate is that we have about seventy-five to a hundred applications, okay? So this is what we knew. We knew this was going to happen, but the goal was to go through all the applications and say which ones do the same things, right? We can't provide support for six hundred applications. Our instructional leaders and Tracy cannot provide, you know, professional development and the support. No one can know that many well, but we can know a smaller amount of applications well. So the project will continue. We'll hope to narrow this down as we go into next school year, and teachers will know that, you know, there are certain applications that we are going to push them to use and provide training for and support them. And our hope is that that will expand to being able to support our needs a lot better within the district. And we're also looking for our next steps using ClassWise, which is an application management system to help us manage these internally for teachers, too. So more to come there, but our instructional technology team has been great in getting this work started. It's been a big, big overhaul for us. So really excited to see where we go. And the last item I want to report on tonight is the work that the high school has done in terms of the blueprint goal of revisiting the plan for increasing access to AP classes at the high school level. So the high school has engaged in a review of data, lots of different data, looking at why kids take classes, who takes classes, when they take a class, how many classes they have, and looking at what are some of the barriers that they see. So the work they've done so far is just kind of identifying what are the barriers and what interventions can we put in place. This has been a big topic of conversation at the high school, at the department coordinator meetings, and what they've done is really put in place more one-on-one conversations with students to try and hear, you know, what, how they can support students in offering AP classes that they might not know exist, and how to find the right class for students, and also thinking about how to financially support students for some of those exam fees and what that looks like to level the playing field, to keep it equitable for our students. So more to come for that, but kudos to the high school administrators and staff for taking on that goal this year. All right. Pass it off now to Deanna.
Thanks. So as we think about supporting the whole child, as we look at some highlights from the area of mental health and wellness, you'll see opportunities that look at supporting groups of students across our grade levels, across the district, but then also how we really bring that down to individualized student needs as well. Nate, I think you really hit it well with talking about partnerships. And throughout all of the highlights here, you're going to see different partnerships, not only with community agencies. In particular, I'm going to highlight our partnership with Galisono, but then partnerships across the district and with other colleagues, building to building as well. So I can't highlight the Galisono partnership without thanking Caitlin O'Neil, or I should say Caitlin Feeney. Her leadership and guidance around this effort has been significant, also throughout all of these bullet points that I'm going to highlight here today. She meets with our building mental health teams. She brings the teams together, six-twelve or K-5. She's in their buildings with their monthly meetings at each individual building, meeting with administration as well, talking about needs, talking about the professional development and how they can apply it unique to each of those buildings and staff as well. So, and their students, most importantly. So last, when I was up here reporting around our partnership, we were awaiting the Office of Mental Health approval, and we, since then, not only have been approved and have been up and running, but also we, based on the demand and the number of referrals, a second day of supporting students has been added. So Strong comes into our district two days a week. We're supporting our students both at the high school and the middle school. Consultation has also started as well. So what is consultation? Instead of just direct service to students, whether that's here on our campus or at the Strong campus, we've been able to take advantage of working very closely with the providers from Strong themselves. How do we shape behavior plans? How do we look at supporting family needs in a different way? That could be a small intimate group of a team of teachers with Dr. Melissa Heatley, or a larger group from Strong, or it could also be, we even had a consultation six-twelve as well. We've done things on Zoom. We've done things in person, but it's been very, very powerful for opportunities for staff to put things in action the very next day. We're looking forward to an opportunity, in fact, it was a couple of weeks ago, I should say, not looking forward to, a good portion, if not all of our mental health staff was present, and training provided by Dr. Melissa Heatley around school avoidance, which is a hot topic across all of our buildings. How do we engage our families? How do we engage our students? And to come in the spring, they will be the featured guests at the Spring PTSA meeting, talking to parents also around school avoidance and strategies there. In particular, we all walked away with thinking about rungs of a ladder and how we slowly move up the rungs, not trying just to get to the end. We would have to go one step at a time. Our AIS RTI program evaluation, I get to work very closely with not only representatives from all of our buildings, but with Dr. Rio and again with Caitlin also. We're working right now on a handbook. Our staff has asked for process, procedure, frequently asked questions. Karen, you sit on that group with us, too. I'm making eye contact with you. They're asking for what are common things that we need to do across the district, K-12, and then how can we make that unique in our own building that fits our needs based on our grade level and how we're working through the RTI MTSS process. And I have to correct myself because I should be saying the BST process, formerly known as RTI. There's another example. We want to have common nomenclature, common terms that everyone is using, and everyone knows what one another's talking about as well. Again, to repeat what Nate said around partnerships, our partnership with Bavona, and we've been really taking advantage of our partnerships in terms of train-the-trainer opportunities so that we can turnkey instruction right within our own buildings. So we now have had representatives, or by the end of the school year, reps from all of our buildings will have been trained and will be able to deliver those lessons in each of our buildings. I'm just confirming as I look with Caitlin around that. I didn't want to misquote any data. We're really looking, again, at different ways we communicate and connect with our families. And in fact, I just participated just the other day with our most recent Brighton Believes meeting and the feedback regarding our new family event that we had back in January with some pretty positive feedback about that. Looking for some opportunities for how we can shift the date so we have more families available to come and learn about our district, our school community, to have an opportunity casual for people to get to know one another and get to know what we are all about. And again, there are some highlights of more of some professional development that's ongoing since I last met with all of you. And I'm going to turn it over now to Tom. Am I skipping ahead too far? No, student family, I did. I skipped way too far.
You can do it.
No, we'll follow the slides.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back. It's been a year since I've been here, and I vividly remember last year, there were some bets that were taken about how long I was going to be speaking up here, which was a great experience, but hopefully I'm not too long-winded. So good to see everybody. So some of the things that myself and the team has been working on, PTSA partnerships. I've been in all the meetings with the building principals and the PTSA chairs, working on various events that our families and students can engage in. I know Nate had talked about kind of the new normal. There's been a lot of excitement from families and students about being able to get back to being back in the school, school-wide events, and we would look to continue to develop in those areas. And you'll hear about some of them later in this as well. So student leadership is another area where I am trying to leverage. We have some amazing student leaders in our district and at every level. And, you know, I'm one person, but trying to work to, you know, lean on some of that leadership and to help our school and community. So one of the things that I'm going to be doing is taking a group of students, TCMs and BHS students, who are going to the Global Citizen Conference next month at Nazareth College. It's another opportunity where our students have a chance to lead and learn with other student leaders around the area, which is always exciting. Some of you experienced some of the student panels I did last year. We continue to work on student leaders for those as well. CCLT, Culture Climate Leadership Team at BHS, this is a really awesome club that Dr. Hall and his team have developed, and I'm a part of that work as well. It gives me a chance, from the K-12 perspective, to as students go to the high school, to develop those leadership skills. It's also an amazing recruiting area for myself to be able to get students to help me out with other initiatives that we're doing. I really, really enjoy that and just looking forward to continue to be a part of it. Our senior council, actually tomorrow, they're going to be doing a little presentation to our principals and a principals meeting to talk about potential dodgeball fundraisers for the seniors. So we're looking forward to that. So stay tuned. More to that. And then student transitions. Some of those activities have already started, but, you know, trying to make families and students comfortable with all of the vast emotions that are part of school transitions, nervousness. So continue work with that. Our future teachers, Future Teachers Club, shout out to Dr. Rio. I know she was on the radio recently talking about this great club. And once again, I'm trying to get in on the fun to try to leverage some of the leadership. So one of the things that we're going to be doing with Mr. Tappin, so we're going to be coming to, we're bringing some of these future teachers to Council Rock to read to some of our younger students, which I know a lot of people are very, very excited about. The students are excited. And then, excuse me, and then we're looking at opportunities for some of these student leaders that want to be teachers to actually tutor some of our TCMs students. So we're going to be working with Appleton, myself, and looking at opportunities to give them some hands-on experiences before they even go to some of the programs like at St. John Fisher, Dr. Rio. And looking forward to continuing to give students opportunity to interact with each other in meaningful ways. I am also leading with several of our colleagues over here, Suspension Disproportionality Committee. We're taking an internal look at our data as pertains to suspensions. We're looking at race ethnicity. We're looking at our students with disabilities, just looking at all the data to see where we are, current discipline practices, so that we can move forward in the right direction to make sure that we have an equitable experience when it comes to how we handle discipline, and also just awareness of certain groups of students that we may need to engage in different ways in order to be preventative, to make sure that we are, you know, supporting all of our kids in the ways that are meaningful for them. A big one that I've been working on, this was not planned this school year, but we're really, really excited about it. Myself and other leaders around Monroe County are planning a trip to historically black colleges and universities in March. Thank you to everybody. I know the community has been very supportive about it. Many of you have heard about it, and a lot of people have committed to donations and is really, really supportive and excited about it. So I know our students, we're taking twenty-one students to three historically black colleges. We're going to Morgan State, Howard University, Bowie State University. Also going to have a chance to see like the African-American museum. But really, it's a really cool opportunity because most times field trips, it's just within district, and it's exciting. It's also sometimes a pain in the butt trying to coordinate with everybody. But we're really excited to have students in our district have an opportunity to have access and experience some colleges that they may not have had the opportunity to, but also to have this experience with other students around the greater Rochester area. It should be great. So I know Dr. Hall and I are going to be attending that trip. I'm looking forward to it. Tomorrow night, the Urban Suburban Family Social. This is at, and in our role of, I'm sorry, the Mo's is coming up a little bit. Apologies. We're really, really looking forward to the event. The idea is that we provide our families, our urban suburban families, with an opportunity to network with each other. This is some feedback that we received as a district. Oftentimes, when Kindness, partnership we have here. All right? I appreciate it. So this event, some of the feedback that we received from some of our families is that, because we basically have cohorts, they all come in at different years, and oftentimes they don't have opportunities to connect with each other unless they're part of the same cohort. So hopefully we'd like to just provide the opportunity for them to engage with each other without us giving, vomiting a whole bunch of information to them. So I know many of the people in this room may be there tomorrow night, looking forward to it, and I really hope it's going to be a, a great event for the families and our students. And we have some student leaders that are going to be there as well. So looking forward to seeing everybody there. And then I just wanted to end, this isn't really a, you know, a project or, or an initiative, but everything that we do, it, it's all about relationships. And myself and the colleagues over here, we spend so much time trying to work with students and families, and we have a long way to go, but I just wanted, you know, it's, some of this stuff, it's really cut and dry, but we really just spend a lot of time trying to build trust, build relationships that are meaningful for families, meaning their needs, working with them through celebrations, but also challenges. And it's a work in progress, and I'm just privileged to have the opportunity to work along with everybody in this room to create a great welcoming and affirming environment for all of our students and families. So the work continues, and just looking forward to being a part of the, with everybody. So with all the coughing and everything in the water, and the partnerships, I may have, it might be over seven minutes now. So thanks for everyone's time, I appreciate you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Caitlin. Caitlin, please. Please.
All right. Hi, everyone. I have the pleasure of talking about the culture and environment that all of the buildings are working to foster this year, with that focus on building connections and collaborating. So the first area that was identified is about finding time for staff to collaborate together and across buildings. So some things that we wanted to highlight this time was that common planning time, if teams or grade levels didn't have it before, that was found by the building leaders to give people that opportunity to collaborate together. There's also been a commitment from principals to give back some time at faculty meetings, to give people more time to work together. Each of the buildings, including Central Office, have been holding different social events, or luncheons, or things to give time for staff to connect with each other as a whole building, to just build those connections and start to get to know new staff member or different people. Each of the building principals shared that there you have been hosting different staff events, and I kind of put them into some buckets. I think one of the big focuses probably with the holidays and the time of year, but was on gratitude. So a lot of the buildings did things to raise money, to get gift cards for families in need, or to provide just thank you notes to each other. So thanking their colleagues for, for the good work that they do. Another focus has been on kindness. So BHS used the Bruin Cards as signs of encouragement and appreciation. There's been events like staff cookie exchanges and other things that just build connections throughout the buildings. The school-based equity teams that you've heard about in a couple of different presentations continue to meet at each of the buildings, and each building meets, like I said, monthly to work on those action steps that they've, that they had identified in the fall. I wanted to highlight that TCMS decided to resurvey their students. So in the late fall, they gave all of the students the Panorama Survey, and then they have been using that data to look at the areas of connectedness and belonging, and they have identified growth since the spring with the student data to, to the late fall. Another area being faculty connection, so still connected to that first area, but each faculty meeting in all the buildings starts with some type of connection activity or a community building circle. Like I talked about, each building has been hosting various events, chili cook-offs, what's the Bruin doing, different breakfasts, and even bringing in food trucks. And the last area is around restorative practices to build community. So the classrooms are continuing to use circles to, within their classroom communities. Counselors and teachers use these as part of restorative conversations, even some pieces of restorative discipline, and then as also part of the second step lessons at the K-5 level. The middle school started their SEL Wednesday this school year, which has now shifted to Fridays, but those continue to go really well. They are actually in the process of gathering feedback from the students to get their input on the lessons, the topics, all of the parts of, of those Fridays. Like I talked about, BHS uses their faculty meetings to use the Community Circle Forum to build connections, and FRES is planning a Wellness Day, which is partnered between their Restorative Practice Committee, Habits of Mind, and Star Qualities, all kind of coming together to plan that Wellness Day for all staff. And I think now I get to turn it over to Tom.
Evening, everybody. I'm, I'm not Lou, obviously, but he asked me to step in with the safety and planning area. He has been working pretty close to us, with us, for the last several years, but especially last summer when we really dug into developing or adding to our, our current threat assessment model, but adding in several different pieces that we've taken from various conferences that we've attended regarding threat assessments. There's certainly a lot of information out there that we've tried to take in, work with our own Brighton Police Department, but from the conferences that we've had, on really being proactive to identify potential student threats or even staff threats well ahead of time by going through various assessments based on the people that are presenting or any issues or concerns that they might come forward with. Two of the things that this Safe Schools Initiative found, which just makes sense, the, the biggest thing we can do is evaluate the current information that we're presented with, and use that to discuss those students or staff members if there's concerns, and work with multiple people to evaluate a potential threat, or several different pieces of information that come together that, you know, in isolation might not be worrisome, but when you put it all together, could be very concerning, and then taking appropriate action from there. On the right side, 10 key findings of Safe School Initiative, they're all listed right there, but Lou highlighted these three, which I'll go through. Most attacks, attackers, so we're talking about actual school violence, school shooter, or an active threat to a building or a staff, they usually engage in some sort of behavior prior to the incident that may cause concern or alarm. If we have students identified who have had some of these issues, certainly there are kids that we work with, make sure that we have some supports in, people are checking in with them, and we discuss them quite frequently. But, you know, one isolation, one isolated event doesn't mean that there's going to be something horrible later on, but certainly when you put several things together again, and you have multiple people who are part of that team, it certainly can help build a better case for, we may be taking some additional intervention. Most school attackers were known to have difficulty coping with some significant loss or personal failures. So as we work, it's not just administrators working through this threat assessment model. Our counselors are also very involved in that, in addition to law enforcement. And again, I don't think there's any surprise to anybody, but most school attackers or people that have carried out some sort of violent act in a school setting have felt bullied, persecuted, or they have some vendetta against the school, or felt injured by others or, you know, in the school, or felt wrong. So this is something we definitely keep on our radar, not only at the high school, but all of our levels, but primarily middle, high school, this would kick in, so. Any questions?
No. Again, appreciate two things. First, of course, that we're checking in regularly with where we are on the Blueprint Initiative. So thanks to everyone who presented and provided status and updates tonight, that's greatly appreciated. As our sort of guiding documents and how we set our priorities, these are extraordinarily helpful. It also helps the community that decides to access these blueprints, understand what we're about, and what you all, what we all are trying to do. So once again, greatly appreciate that you spent the time giving us the update. Any specific questions on any of the categories from anybody on the board?
I just really appreciate these periodic check-ins, they're really terrific. Keeps us all just, there's so much happening, so it's good to hear all the different pieces on a regular basis.
We just acknowledge you all have your hands full every day, we greatly appreciate it.
I, my comment very similar, just reiterate, you know, kids come to school every day, they have an incredible experience, they go home at the end of the day, they do homework, they take tests, they go to events, they have, you know, the day-to-day, right? And these people make sure that they have a safe experience, enjoyable experience, and every day is wonderful, and all the things that go into that, whether it's food, transportation, staff has what they need, teachers can teach, you know, people can do what they have to. And at the same time, everything that you just heard was about improving that experience each and every day, and thinking really deeply about how to make that better, how to improve our practice, how to continue to grow, and we, you know, we don't just say it, we don't just sit down over the summer and then come up with a glossy binder and put it on a shelf, but the organization is ever-moving forward because they make it happen, and a lot of people on their teams participate in these kinds of conversations. So thanks for continuing to support that process, and for them putting together really comprehensive reports, just to continue to move that ball forward and not wait again until the summer to review it, but rather say this is where we are now, and this is where we're heading. So really appreciate that, thanks. And thanks to all of them.
Thank you. Next up, the amended agenda, item number nine, approval of some first-read policies. There are four total. Two are acceptable use, one for students and one for personnel, Policy 7315 and Policy 6470. Policy 1510, the bylaws, regular board meetings, and rules quorum, and parliamentary procedures, and finally, Policy 5622, non-instructural business operations, accounting for information, technology, supplies, and equipment. These are a first read, they are, they've been vetted. Any questions in regards to the first read? Motion to approve for first read?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
For the consent agenda, field trip approvals. The students are traveling. So we've got the BHS German Exchange Trip, which is February 15th, that's coming up currently. The BHS Israel Exchange Trip, which is February 16th, and then we heard Jeff Green references the Historically Black College and University Trip, Washington DC, March 19th, March 19th to 21. And that's, I'm sorry, that's new item 10, that's the field trip approvals. Fundraising activities, I say this all the time, there is not a shortage of eating opportunities. Take advantage of them, please. There are six different here that have to do with the TCMS Culinary Club, the 2025 Student Council, the 2024 Class Council, another one for the TCMS Student Council, Brighton Baseball Boosters, and Chipotle. And then gifts, it is our habit to read the gifts out loud. An anonymous gift in the amount of $500 to the PTSA to be used for a student in need wanting to go on the TCMS German trip, that's just a lovely gift. And then a gift from the Brighton Education Fund, the Nancy Beck Fund, the BHS Hardship Fund, and the Brighton School Alumni Association, the amount of $2,000 to support the trip for Brighton's minority students to visit the historically black colleges and universities around Washington DC. And again, we heard Jeff talk about that and some of the things that we're doing and seeing. It sounds like an absolutely fantastic trip. Thank you, Jeff, for leading that trip. Questions in regard to the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Jolene?
Second.
Seconded by Christine. All those in favor?
Aye.
I will quickly thank our student Violet behind the camera tonight, thank you for your help, Bill and Mike. Thank you all for making us look however we look on the camera. So thank you there. Anything else before we adjourn Dr. McGowan, members of the board?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.